The time has arrived. When I call the city council meeting to order, please stand and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
If we could all remain standing for just a couple of quick moments. I would like to take a moment of silence for a very well-known Brocktonian who passed away last week, resident of Ward III for a good, good many years. His childhood days, to be truthful with you, his old homestead is still there. And as you know, that's Mr. Kyle Landerholm who passed. So without saying other than what's been said so nicely about him in the newspaper the last several days, and understanding he had an outstanding turnout for his funeral the other day as well, I think he just deserves a moment of silence coming from us. And I know he served once as a building inspector. I believe he was under Mayor Fowle as the building inspector. So a great guy and a great historian to the city. We're losing some of them unfortunately, but I just want to take a moment of silence Thank you, and I'm sure he would appreciate every moment that that had. Thank you.
Well, good evening, councilors, and welcome to our January 28 meeting. Mr. Clark, if you could read agenda item one.
We have the acceptance of the minutes of the January 14, 2019, city council meeting.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
We have the report of the finance committee for its meeting of January 22, 2019.
That will be accepted and placed on file.
We have a hearing, ordinance amended chapter 27 of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton concerning the regulations and taxation of marijuana. Being ordained by the city council of the City of Brockton, Article III, general regulations and permitted modifications, is hereby amended by adding the following sections, 27-24. For adult use of marijuana. In council, March 26, 2018, ready to refer the standing committee on ordinance and planning, reports were favorable as amended. In council, December 27, 2018, refer to planning.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor of this order? If so, please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Anyone in favor of this order? Can't hear?
What was the order?
What he just read.
I know.
About the marijuana ordinance in the city. Anyone in favor?
No one.
If you are, please step up and give your name to the clerk. Hello? I declare that portion closed. Is there anybody here in opposition to the ordinance? Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk. Anyone in opposition? Hearing none? I declare that portion closed. The question is on ordination by, as amended, and I ask the clerk to please call the roll. Oh, Madam Clerk, it's you on this end.
Okay, so my counsel, my advice to the city council is to wait until January 14th because we do not have final.
February 14th?
February 14th, excuse me. Because we don't have a planning board recommendation one way or the other. The prior recommendation has expired, and the ordinance as amended created substantial changes to what they had previously already recommended as favorable. The planning department is meeting on February 5th, and the Massachusetts law requires to have the report from the planning department before any passage. So my recommendation to the city council would be for a motion to postpone for final passage until the February 14th hearing, city council meeting.
Motion to postpone until February 14th?
February 14th. It's the first Monday, or not the 14th, February 11th. February 11th. It's the first Monday, our first meeting in February.
Motion to postpone till February 11th.
Second?
Yes, Council Sullivan.
Mr. President, you sat with me on the ordinance last year, and I'm just going to ask, because we're going to have some time, if this passes, I'm going to ask our legal counsel if she could just vet out again. My notes from that meeting on 12/18 differ slightly with some verbiage changes. I'll be happy to go over it with the attorney.
Yep.
But I just want to make sure we catch everything that we lawfully voted for as a committee that night. Thank you.
So be it. Anything else? The motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor postponing until our February 11th meeting? Anyone oppose? So be it.
Communication from the school department, chief budget officer, requesting that the city council authorizes the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated February 14, 2019, for the Huntington Therapeutic Day School located at 1121 Warren Avenue, Brockton, Mass., for consideration under MSBA Priority Category 5, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility.
Accepted and placed on file.
Have a communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, requesting that the city council authorize the superintendent to submit to the Mass. School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated February 14, 2019, for the Huntington Therapeutic Day School located at 1121 Warren Avenue, Brockton, which describes and explains the deficiencies and the priority categories or categories as delineated on the addendum for which an application may be submitted to the Mass. School Building Authority in the future. Huntington School Roof, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that the submitting this statement of interest form, the Mass. School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Mass. School Building Authority are commenced to city, town, regional school district to file an application for funding with the Mass. School Building Authority. The mayor is recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
The CFO has a conditional certification. From the CFO, in accordance with Section 5 of Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990, certifying that the city council authorizes the submission of the statement of interest form, SOI, only, to the Mass. School Building Authority, MSBA, dated February 14, 2019, for the Huntington Therapeutic Day School located at 1121 Warren Avenue, Brockton, Mass. The addendum describes and explains the deficiencies of priorities and categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future. Huntington School Roof, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the MSBA in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the MSBA are commenced to the City of Brockton to file an application for funding. With the MSBA, furthermore, the city council and mayor should be aware that the MSBA regulations indicate that a SOI should not be submitted unless the community has the ability to fund the project within two fiscal years. This will entail appropriating funds for planning and feasibility as well as construction. At the present, these costs are unknown, but in his opinion, funding these costs most likely will have a negative impact on continuous provisions of services unless the city obtains a favorable vote on a debt exclusion.
Accepted and placed on file.
From you.
I'd like to make a motion to take number 31 out of order tonight and also act it on it tonight under suspensional rules.
Motion has been properly made and properly seconded. All those in favor taking 31, 30 and 31 out of order?
31 relative to the Huntington, and then after number 12, I believe 30 would be applicable at that time.
All those in favor? Oppose?
Order that the city council authorizes the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February 14, 2019, for the Huntington Therapeutic Day School located at 1121 Warren Avenue, Brockton, Mass., relative to roof repairs.
Mr. Clerk, I know that I think I saw the deputy superintendent. If there's no objection, you can have the deputy superintendent come up and make a small, important presentation on these items.
Thank you, councilors, for having us here tonight. I just want to always thank this body. I've been in front of you twice with the superintendent in the school committee, once in 2011, again in 2015. During those two times, we've secured $50 million in funding to fix 14 of our school buildings, roof, windows, boilers. Out of that $50 million, 80 percent of that is picked up by the Mass. School Building Authority. So tonight, we're in front of you asking permission only to submit the statement of interests, which are applications for the Huntington School Roof and the renovation of the North Middle School. What these do, your vote allows me to submit the application only, and if those applications are accepted, then obviously we would need to come back to you to review the funding, the price tag on the projects, and obviously nothing would move forward unless you voted to approve that as well. But it is a, the roof project moves more quickly. It's called the accelerated repair, so that would move quickly for the Huntington School. You would pretty much have a price, you'd probably have an answer that's due by February 15th. You would have an answer by April 1st whether we're accepted for that, and then that would move pretty quickly through the summer, and then they try to put the roof on by the end of the fall. The North project would be a much longer process. That would be a year. They would, the MSBA would set up a committee. There would be a subcommittee from the city council, a subcommittee from the school committee to actually review what would you actually would want to do with North. How many students would go back there? Whether you wanted to make it a STEM school, put more money into science labs, computer labs? So that would actually be a longer process. That would involve the community, the elected officials, and that would determine actually how much the building would cost. And that would be a full year planning process before you would decide what to do with North Middle School and how to bring that back online. So that's how the MSBA process works itself out. Questions if need be?
Are there any questions? Concerns? Council fellow?
If I'm right, you've already done quite a bit of work analyzing the North Junior High School, what might happen if it's remodeled, where the students would go, I assume, and so perhaps that information can come to us. I mean, clearly both projects are critical, and the more information, the better.
Sure. Yeah, that's no problem.
Motion for favorable recommendations. Yeah, because it's an order. I'm actually getting pretty good at this. The question is on ordination by a roll call vote. Huh? Isn't it an order? Well, maybe I wasn't getting so good at this. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll call.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darrencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
Mr. President, I move for reconsideration in hopes that it does not prevail. A motion for reconsideration in hopes that it does not succeed has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor of consideration? All those opposed? So be it. And it fails. Now we're going to do number 12.
10, 11, and 12.
10, 11, and 12. Got it. Mr. Clerk, please.
Okay, ready? Here we go. From the chief budget officer of the school department, requesting that the city council authorizes the superintendent to submit to the Mass. School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 11, 2019, for the North Middle School located at 108 Oak Street, Brockton, Mass. The school should be considered under MSBA Priority Category Number 1, replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of school children where no alternatives exist. If a district selects this priority, the MSBA must receive a hard copy of the engineering or other professional report detailing the nature and severity of the problem and a written professional opinion of how imminent the system failure is likely to manifest itself. The report must be from an independent source that is not under the control of the school district or the city or town. In addition to the independent report, the district must submit photographs of the conditions which caused the district to select Priority Number 1. In order to bring this school up to the standard requirements for a middle school, current state building codes and ADA American with Disabilities Act requirements, a total rehab is necessary. The school will be required to update the electrical, heating, ventilation bathrooms, fire codes, as well as student needs.
That's accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, requesting the city council authorizes superintendent to submit to the Mass. School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 11, 2019, for the North Middle School located at 108 Oak Street, Brockton, Mass., which describes and explains deficiencies and the priority categories or category, that delineated of the addendum for which the application may be submitted to the Mass. School Building Authority in the future. North Middle School full renovation, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Mass. School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Mass. School Building Authority or commitments, city to strike that, City of Brockton to file an application for funding with Mass. School Building Authority. The mayor recommends the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a conditional certification. That is from the CFO, in accordance with Section 5, Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990, certifying that the city council authorize the submission of the statement of interest form, SOI, only, to the Mass. School Building Authority, MSBA, dated April 11, 2019, for the North Middle School located at 108 Oak Street, Brockton, Mass. The addendum describes and explains the deficiencies of the priority category or categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future. North Middle School full renovation, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the MSBA in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the MSBA are commenced to the City of Brockton to file an application for funding with the MSBA. Furthermore, the city council and mayor should be aware that the MSBA regulations indicate that an SOI should not be submitted unless the community has the ability to fund the project within two fiscal years. This will entail appropriation funds, planning and feasibility, as well as construction. At the present, these costs are unknown, but in his professional opinion, funding these costs most likely will have a negative impact on continuous provision of services unless the city obtains a favorable vote on a debt exclusion.
That's accepted and placed on file.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take number 30 out of order.
The motion has been properly made and properly seconded.
And act on it this evening.
To take 30 out of order and act on it tonight. All those in favor? Anyone oppose? We will do that. Mr. Clerk, number 30.
30, the order, order that the city council authorizes the superintendent to submit to the Mass. School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 11, 2019, for the North Middle School located at 108 Oak Street, Brockton, Mass., relative to standard requirements for a middle school, current state building codes and ADA requirements.
Mr. Clerk, councilors, I know that the deputy superintendent is here. Would you like to come up and give us your take on this?
Yeah, but he did on it.
I wasn't quite listening. Could you just do it again?
Yeah, so this is about North. This is for North. So sure. As you know, because of this body, you put through a half-million-dollar facilities master plan, which was approved, which laid out our school buildings that would need to be renovated, and North was near the top of the list for need of a total renovation. Obviously, built in 1959, other than a roof and windows, there's, and some new boilers there, has not been much work is done as renovation, so it's in a die-in need of an upgrade to the electrical system, the plumbing system, total renovation of the classrooms, storage areas, the gymnasium. So the fire alarm needs to be upgraded, obviously sprinkle a system. It needs to be ADA compliant. An elevator would have to be added to the building. The entrances would have to be changed and made wider. So obviously, it's a total renovation, which is much needed, and hopefully as part of the facilities master plan, this would be the first phase of starting to renovate our older buildings. So as you know, the school committee voted last year to start to empty out North of students. Right now, instead of having 6th, 7th, and 8th grade at North, we only have 7th and 8th grade. The 8th graders will graduate, move on to high school in June. Next year, we will only have 8th graders there, and then after the 8th graders leave, hopefully, you know, if we get the application, the building will close, and then we would start the renovation. So that's pretty much the plan that's been laid out.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
If I might, Mr. Counsel. Right now, deputy superintendent, now the principal is no longer there in the building. Is that correct? And it's the assistant principal?
Yes, the assistant will become the interim principal for this year and next year.
Yeah, for this year and next year.
Yeah, and the principal has moved on to the Brookfield School.
Is it the same assistant principal? Is it Mrs. McCormick or?
Yeah, Mrs. McCormick, Marion McCormick. She's been there for.
Long time.
Oh, she's been her whole career.
Know her well.
She taught over there for years, and now she's been the assistant principal for 15 years, and now is the interim principal.
And then we'll go from that. Yeah, okay.
Exactly.
And then will she go, will she be relocated or?
She would be relocated if, you know, once the school closes, yes.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, she's one of our most tenured administrators.
I know how she got there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, councilors. Any other questions? The motion has been properly made and properly seconded. The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darrencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
11 in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Consideration in hopes that it does not prevail.
A motion has been made for reconsideration in hopes that it does not carry. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those oppose? It fails.
Mr. President, if I might, just a quick note that I thought we should mention that school committee vice chairman, Mr. Minicello, school committee members Judy Sullivan, Tim Sullivan, and Mr. D'Agostino are all here tonight supporting the issue, so I just wanted to make note of them being in the audience.
Duly noted. I think it gets paid well, is that what you just said?
No, I just said it gets paid.
Oh, okay. All those here too, but we didn't have to mention it. Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Clerk, I think we should continue on with the agenda so we can. Number 4. Number 7.
Okay, let me just, okay. Did they want a recess of any time for these? From the executive health officer, requesting that the mayor and city council accept the sum of $7,109.69 from the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards for the purpose of building the level of volunteers and equipment for our area medical reserve corps.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO, relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file. 13.
I'll go to 13. From the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, an audit of fund the agreement between the city and the Brockton City Employees Union regarding a compensation and position reclassification study, hereby recommends that the city council authorizes the appropriation of $73,000 from the stabilization fund to the following. Auditor's department personal services other than overtime, $872. Animal control personal services other than overtime, $18,138. DPW administration personal services other than overtime, $52. DPW refuse division personal service other than overtime, $2,199. Information technology personal services other than overtime, $14,502. License commission personal services other than overtime, $52. Mayor's office personal services other than overtime, $3,000. Police personal services other than overtime, $30,000. Veterans services personal services other than overtime, $1,462. Waits and measures personal service other than overtime, $2,244. The letter agreement is the result of lengthy bargaining between the city and the union over the upgrades and reclassification study conducted by DI Jacobs Consulting Company, Inc. The study was agreed to as part of a memorandum of understanding for the period of 7/116 to 6/319 between the City of Brockton and Brockton City Employees Union. The total amount is $72,521.
That's accepted and placed on file.
We have a conditional certification from the CFO, in accordance with Section 5 of Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990, certifying the proposed appropriation of $73,000 for the purposes of funding the side letter of agreement between the City of Brockton and Brockton City Employees Union. For future years, this agreement will place a modest financial pressure on the provision of services due to expected tight budgets. However, this agreement is fair to both city and employees and recommends funding it.
That's acceptable and placed on file.
From the city auditor, certifying the balance of the stabilization fund as of January 7, 2019, is $4,561,629.99.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor, in accordance with the Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorizes an appropriation, $80,000, from the stabilization fund to the fire department personal services non-overtime, in order to fund the cost provisions of the attached side letter between the city and the firefighters' union, effective January 1, 2019. The hazardous duty stipend will increase by 1 percent. The terms of the side letter of agreement state that all parties shall not be obligated to any additional bargaining over this issue during negotiations of the successor fiscal 2019 through fiscal 2020 collective bargaining agreement.
That's accepted and placed on file.
We have a conditional certification from CFO, in accordance with Section 5, Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990, certifying the proposed appropriation of $80,000 from stabilization fund to fire department personal services non-overtime. Future fiscal years will be slightly stressed by this additional cost.
That's accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorizes an appropriation of $7,800,000, recommended by attorney Richard Manley of Lockwood, LOP, the city bond council, in order to provide funding through borrowing set among, to pay costs of making improvements to the city's wastewater treatment facilities. Subsequent fiscal years may require additional rate increases to pay potential additional costs from the need to replace the current O and M contract which is expiring. When the specific impact of this becomes known, recommendations will be made.
That's accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO, in accordance with Section 5 of Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990, certifying the proposed appropriation and loan order of $7,800,000 for purposes making improvements to the city's wastewater treatment facilities. A rate increase of 5 percent will be necessary to ensure the continuous provision of services. This percentage is comprised of the combined effect of the cost of debt service on the subject loan, plus the cost of impact of shipping sewer sludge out of town rather than burning and ladfilling it on the site. The present rate structure has not been adjusted for this change. This is a conditional certification which must appear on the loan order. Subsequent fiscal years may require additional rate increases to pay potential additional costs from the need to replace the current O and M contract which is expiring. When the specific impacts of this becomes known, recommendations will be made.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize an appropriation of $42,000 from the stabilization fund to assesses debt personal services other than overtime, $2,934. Auditor's debt personal services other than overtime, $7,740. Cemetery debt personal services other than overtime, $1,018. Councilor aging personal services other than overtime, $1,166. DPW refuse division personal services other than overtime, $205. DPW water enterprise personal services other than overtime, $3,045. Elections commission personal services other than overtime, $2,924. Finance department personal services other than overtime, $205. Fire personal services other than overtime, $3,653. Board of health personal services other than overtime, $7,726. Police department personal services other than overtime, $1,132. Procurement department personal services other than overtime, $730. Public property personal services other than overtime, $3,653. Tax department personal service other than overtime, $80. Treasure department personal service other than overtime, $3,870. In order to fund the agreement between the city and the Brockton City Employees Union regarding compensation and position reclassification study, the letter agreement is a result of lengthy bargaining between the city and the union over the upgrade of reclassification study conducted by D.J. Jacobs Consulting Company, Inc. The study was agreed to as part of the memorandum of understanding for the period of 7/1/16 to 6/30/19 between the city of Brockton, City Hall Employees Union. The total amount is $40,081.
That's accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO, in accordance with Section 5 of Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990, certifying to propose appropriation of $42,000 for the purposes of funding the letter of agreement between the city of Brockton and the Brockton City Hall Employees Union. For future years, the agreement will place a modest financial pressure on city and employees, and he recommends funding it.
That's accepted and placed on file.
Okay, we have the appointment of Tanya Tillman of 1092 North Main Street, Brockton, the Elections Commission for a term of four years, in council December 27, 2018. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
The appointment of Carol Roberts of 755 Crescent Street to the Brockton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a five-year term, in council January 14, 2019. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on confirmation by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed.
An appropriation of additional grant funds in the amount of $175,200 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Fiscal 19, Municipal Police Service Staffing Grant, to City of Brockton Police Department, Fiscal 19, Municipal Police Servicing Staffing Grant Fund, in council January 14, 2019. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant funds in the amount of $125,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research, Fiscal 20, I'm sorry, FY 2019, Mass. Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant, to the City of Brockton Fire Department, SFY 2019, Mass. Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant Fund, in council January 14, 2019. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant funds in the amount of $544,527.37 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Fiscal 19, Senator Charles E. Shannon, Jr., Community Safety Initiative Grant, to the City of Brockton Police Department, Fiscal 19, Senator Charles E. Shannon, Jr., Community Safety Initiative Grant Fund, in council January 14, 2019. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant funds in the amount of $544,527.37 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Fiscal 19, Senator Charles E. Shannon, Jr., Community Safety Initiative Grant Fund, in council January 14, 2019. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of total grant funds in the amount of $9,253 from the Massachusetts Service Alliance to the Brockton Public Library. There is a $10,405.92 match required, in council January 14, 2019. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
We have an appropriation of the total grant funds in the amount of $13,586 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Department of Fire Services, 2019, Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant, $10,386, to the City of Brockton Fire Department, Fiscal 2019, Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant Fund, and $3,200 to the City of Brockton Fire Department, Fiscal 2019, Senior Safe Grant Fund, in council January 14, 2019. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve to invite the city solicitor or a representative from the law department to inform the city council and the public as to the new contract with Comcast, or if the new contract has not been signed, information as to where we as a community stand on this issue, in council October 22, 2018. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve to invite the city solicitor or a representative from the law department to inform the city council and the public as to the new contract with Comcast, or if the new contract has not been signed, information as to where we as a community stand on this issue, in council October 22, 2018. Ready for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
The question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 32, right?
I will go to 32, yeah.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the laying out and acceptance of Waldron Road extending from Colgate Road westerly and northerly to Vale Street. For that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. It's approved. Revote required to be in compliance with a 30-day timeframe for recording.
Mr. President.
I move that we take items 32, 33, 34, and 35 collectively, and that we act on them now.
And suspend the rule and act on it.
Suspend the rules and act on the check.
Huh?
You have to have a hearing on this.
You have to have a hearing.
No, no, the hearing, the hearing has all been taken done. What happened here is that it went 32 days. We could register it, have it recorded in 32 days, but 50 years from now, somebody could look at it and say, "How come?" So we decided better to play it safe, do it within a 30-day period, and just take the vote over.
Can I give you the explanation? Any further questions on that? A motion was made to take them collectively and act on them tonight. All those in favor of taking them collectively and acting them? All those opposed? We will do that. Mr. Clerk?
Okay. That the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the laying out and acceptance of Boundary Circle extending from Randolph Avenue easterly and northerly to Brookville Avenue. For that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Approved. Revote required to be in compliance with the 30-day timeframe for recording. Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the laying out and acceptance of Braintree Avenue extending from Boundary Circle westerly and northerly to Brookville Avenue, a distance of about 648, 600.48 feet, and for that purpose, it's necessary to take easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Approved. Revote required to be in compliance with the 30-day timeframe for recording. Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the laying out and acceptance of Vale Street extending from Norwich Road westerly to Upton Street, a distance of about 636.65 feet, and for that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Approved. Revote required to be in compliance with the 30-day timeframe for recording.
The question is on adoption by a roll call to take items 32, 33, 34, and 35 collectively. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darencourt?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the laying out and acceptance of Boundary Circle extending from Randolph Avenue easterly and northerly to Brookville Avenue. For that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Approved. Revote required to be in compliance with the 30-day timeframe for recording.
The question is on adoption by a roll call to take items 32, 33, 34, and 35 collectively. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
ASAC?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
...to Brookville Avenue, for that purpose it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Approved, revote required to be in compliance with the 30-day timeframe for recording. Order that the common necessity and convenience, the inhabitants of the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Braintree Avenue extending from Boundary Circle, Westley and Naughton to Brookville Avenue, a distance of about 648 feet, 600.48 feet. And for that purpose, it's necessary to take easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Approved, revote required to be in compliance with the 30-day timeframe recording. Order that the common necessity and convenience of the inhabitants, the city of Brockton require the layout and acceptance of Vale Street extending from Norwich Road, Westley to Upton Street, a distance of about 636.65 feet. And for that purpose, it's necessary to take an easement for highway purposes and lay out as a public street away of said city of Brockton. Approved, revote required to be in compliance with 30-day timeframe recording.
The question is on adoption by a roll call to take items 32, 33, 34, and 35 collectively. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ten of the affirmative, one of the negative.
The order is adopted.
Mr. President, for reconsideration, I hope it does not prevail.
Motion for reconciliation, in hopes that it does not prevail, has been made. And second, all those in favor of reconciliation, all those oppose, it fails.
Mr. President, if I could show you, I was gonna ask legal counsel, whose responsibility is it to record these?
The engineer.
The engineering department?
Yes.
And there's a 30-day time window?
There's a 30-day.
So we just slightly missed it.
We came just in between it.
Yep.
We found out we could do it, but in the future could lead to problems.
Yep.
And it was stated that it would be much easier and better.
To revote it and get it in.
To revote it.
All right.
Get it in. Nothing else changes, just to make.
Yep, just cleans it up.
To be able to comply.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Sullivan. Mr. Clerk, item number 36.
36. Order that the sum of $7,800,000 is appropriated to pay cost of making improvements to the city's wastewater treatment facilities, including the payment of all planning and engineering costs, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, and/or Mass. General Law's Chapter 29(c), or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue boans or notes of the city.
This order is referred to Finance. 37.
In order to fund the agreement between the city and the Brockton City Employees Union regarding compensation and position reclassification study, hereby recommends that the city council authorize the appropriation of $73,000 from a stabilization fund to various departments as part of a memorandum of understanding for the period of 7/116 to 6/390 between the city of Brockton and the Brockton City Employees Union.
This order will be referred to Finance.
Order, in order to fund the agreement between the city and the Brockton City Hall Employees Union regarding compensation and position reclassification study, the city council authorizes the appropriation and the amount of $42,000 from a stabilization fund to various departments as part of memorandum of understanding for the period of 7/116 to 6/390 between the city of Brockton and the Brockton City Employees Union.
This order will be referred to Finance.
Order that the city council hereby extends the moratorium to prohibit retail stores from operating and preventing any business license to issue in the city of Brockton relative to the sale of recreational marijuana for a finite period. To allow the city of Brockton Planning Department to convene and vote on the pending ordinance relative to the regulations and zoning marijuana facilities. The moratorium shall be extended for a brief period and be in effect through and included February 28, 2019, or until such time as the pending city ordinances for licensing and zoning receives final passage, whichever shall be soon of, to ensure the final and proper passage of the pending city ordinances.
Mr. President. Counsel Sullivan.
I'm gonna make a motion that we act on a suspension of the rules and vote on this tonight. Reason being is the current moratorium lapses in three days, the 31st. As our legal counsel said, Mr. May has represented to us that the planning board is meeting February 5th. So this is kind of belted and suspended, it's kind of darting the i's, crossing the t's. If we continue it and take a lawful vote, the moratorium will be earlier of. We're meeting again the 11th of February, but this is gonna protect the integrity of the council and everybody that's on the ordinance that's worked so diligently on it. Thank you, Ms. President.
The order has been properly made and properly seconded, that we take this under suspension rule and ordain it tonight. Counsel Foul.
Counselors, I have no objection to doing that tonight. I would like to ask our legal counsel to comment or give some guidance on the fact that we do have two duly established marijuana facilities in the city who are all ready to go. Frankly, I thought the planning board was going to hold a special meeting so that this would be expedited, and I don't know what happened. I think the complexities of running this city are such that these boards that meet once a month may have to meet maybe every three weeks, or they may have to have special meetings the way we do. But at any rate, we're delaying it again. And I don't know Mr. Noble, other than shaking his hand a couple of times. I have no interest in the marijuana industry, but in terms of fairness, I'd like to hear if they could be exempted from this, or what our legal counsel's recommendation would be.
So, just, we did comment on that at Finance a few months ago, I think it was back in October, and my comment then was that our licensing regulations had not yet passed. The licensing aspect of it has passed. Right now is pending zoning. So the zoning doesn't change as far as where the operations of the medicinal sites can operate. They can still operate at their facilities, that doesn't change them. But the one thing that it does require in the zoning is for them to go through a site plan review, and that's something that the planning board will weigh in on at their February 5th hearing. So it's not that they're exempt from the zoning requirements because as part of their application, they would still need to certify the site plan, but their location is grandfathered in. So my recommendation would be to just let the time pass. It should hopefully be available for a full city vote at the February 11th meeting, so even though it says the 28th, as long as it's passed before then, that would be the date of effective. So the benefit would only be about an 11-day period for those sites.
Well, just in response to that, I would say respectfully, if because of weather, if because of lack of a quorum, the planning board doesn't meet, then I think we need to revisit this issue. So I regret that we can't do anything, but I would never argue with a lady and a lady lawyer, so I understand.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, sir, Counsel Ioneary.
Thank you, Mr. President, if I might, and I guess I fall on the heels of my colleague, City Council Large Counsel Foul, in regards to the same somewhat concerns that he's just addressed in regards to this matter. And it has nothing to do with the ordinance committee and all the work they did and all the diligence that they did to get it taken care of, as much as at one point in time when I attended one of the meetings as council president, you know, the paper had to write that I was irate that night, and I was yelling at everybody that was on the ordinance committee, which was totally, totally ineffective, you know, was totally defunct, to be truthful with you. My concern was that we would get, you know, through this in a faster pace, but I think we did the best that we could for what we had working in front of us. But I do have the same concern because of the locations, which are in Lot 3, in an industrial-zoned area, not bothering anybody, doing their job as in good health has been doing for the last two and a half to three years, and I think has brought us in that period of time well over $275,000. And I just think that, you know, probably the last couple of months, he might have been able to bring in close to about $800,000 if he had been already set up to do the recreational piece that he's grandfathered to do. So I have the same concern, and I agree with Counsel Foul. I don't want to hear next month, "Well, we don't have a quorum." You don't? Well, then someone's gonna step up to the bat and say, "Well, then I guess we make the planning board a little bit larger, and we start to do the job the right way." Because that, to me, is gonna, it's not gonna fly. I mean, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this because of that situation and the fact that we're still losing revenue, and we need to start to make some of it, whether people want to or not. It's law, let's work with it, let's get it over with, let's just keep moving forward. But again, I want everybody to understand, it has nothing to do with the ordinance committee because they did an ominous job of getting things done, everything here in front of me this evening that I can read, but I just feel that, you know, this particular business in good health is losing out, and so won't the other, because if you're paying attention, you go West Chestnut Street, you'll see a dilapidated building that's all been remodelingized and is ready to go. It's a nice-looking building, it's gonna be a good-looking building when it gets inside, and their job is gonna be medical marijuana, we're just recreational. Not all in the arms of what David is doing in that full building, which I believe he now leases the whole building, so. But any case, if not, I agree with Counsel Foul that we need to revisit the issue if it doesn't, that's not fair, that's not fair to them. You know, it's like me telling the guy, "You can't pick your car up yet, you gotta wait another 10 days because something," that's not right.
I knew there was a car thing coming.
You knew it. Not anymore, I don't, no.
Counselor Sullivan.
Mr. President, I just wanna say a couple things. We got bashed by the mayor dozen times in the newspaper, we were dragging our feet, we were anti-business, all this crap, and that's what it was, it was crap, it was bogus. I asked as chairman of the ordinance committee, Mr. May, who works for the mayor of the city of Brockton, "When are you meeting?" He said, "First week of January." First week of January. He said, "Mr. Noble was there that night." He said that to us, so that's why we continued it until the end of January, or sooner. So if anybody has a gripe, it should be with the mayor of Brockton vis-à-vis Mr. May, because when I reached out to him this week saying, "Where's the recommendation?", he said, "Oh, we're meeting February 5th." February 5th, you know it expires on the 31st of January. Has nothing to do about lost revenue, it's procedural practice. We are obligated under Massachusetts General Law, we are charged as elected officials to follow the law. The law says we cannot do a final passage till we have that recommendation. It's clear. You know, these guys aren't losing money, they might be losing money prospectively relative to recreational, but they're doing all right with medical. So again, what's fair is fair for everybody, but if anybody has a gripe, it's not with us. It's with the mayor of Brockton and Mr. May. So if they can't have a quorum, get rid of the board and get new people that are gonna show up. I was on the planning board for five years, I mean, I didn't get paid a dime, I went there every single meeting. Susan was there as well. So, you know, I take offense to the fact that people are saying we're dragging our feet, when we could've passed this thing tonight if the people represented to us that they were gonna meet in January, which was bogus, it didn't happen. Why it didn't happen, I have no clue, call the mayor's office. But I'll tell ya, I'm getting sick and tired of getting kicked after representing the city of Brockton for 13-plus years. You know, Moses was there, Tim was there, Wynne was there, Tom was there, we met eight or nine times. Poor Shannon was there all the time. So I mean, and Phil's office. So I mean, to talk about this going circles, listen, we should vote on this tonight. If people don't wanna vote on it, you know, that's up to you. But we should vote on this tonight, protect the integrity of the city council, follow the law, Massachusetts General Law, which we have to do, and then they meet the 5th, we pass it the 11th, so be it. I mean, it is what it is, but, you know, I don't know what the planning board's agenda is, but to attack us on a regular basis is uncalled for and unconscionable. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. Madam.
Good evening. I just wanna say, practically speaking, the deadline for getting on the planning board's February agenda has passed. So even if we did something different tonight for these two businesses on West Chestnut Street, they can't get on the February agenda, they won't be heard before March, and it's the same result, they would be heard on March if we weigh in on this on February 11th. So practically speaking, we should just hold, you know, stay the course, as Attorney Resnick has suggested, and plan on voting on this on February 11th. And if the planning board doesn't have a quorum, and they usually do have a quorum, we should insist that they have a special meeting prior to February 11th, so we have the results.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Miss Castro. Counsel Lally, do you wanna say something, or you're okay with this?
I didn't have my hand up, no.
Oh, you didn't? I thought, I thought I saw you, and I thought you wanted to say something.
With regard to what Counsel Sullivan just said, I think that, you know, as a body, we do have a solemn obligation, not just to be here, but also to represent the entire people. I believe probably like, probably like it was a month ago, and I believe Mr. Noble was here, and we got to this issue. I think that, you know, if we are here, we are here for a reason, and if some people got appointed, and obviously we voted for them to be on this board, I think we voted for them because we believe that they will be able, not just to show up, but to do the job accordingly. So I don't think we should, we should be on a waiting list, waiting for them to act on whatever they have to act on, because this is something that has been going on for so long. And at the beginning, we take a lot of heat for that, a lot of heat given the fact that it was up to us not doing it. And I think, like he said, this could've passed tonight, but given the fact that we don't have the information that we need based on them, I think it's somewhat like putting us on a weight, given what's going on. I think, like Counsel Susan Castro just said, regardless of what we do tonight, they're not gonna be able to go on that next meeting, which means we are thinking about March. So for me, I think this is unacceptable, because for so long, we've been throwing under the bus, saying that, you know, we don't wanna do the job, or we don't wanna do certain things. So I think it's important, like Counsel Sullivan said, that if you got appointed on those boards, and I hope you guys take notice in regard to who we are appointing, who we are voting to vote on, because if you submit your name to be on those boards, I believe you should take the responsibility to do the job accordingly. Although you don't get paid, but I'm assuming that it's a responsibility, because they don't force you to be on those boards. So if we come here, we not only voted for you, but we assume that you will show up and do the job. So I think it's important for us tonight, not just to talk about this issue, but to understand, whenever we see an appointment come across us, determining whether or not we believe that person will be able, not just to be there, but also to be there when we need that person. So for me, I think it is pretty bad, because I was excited about voting on this tonight, but given what's going on, so for me, I think that, you know, we have to learn from this, and hopefully in the future, this doesn't repeat again. Because I feel like whenever we are about to do something that will be good for Brockton, for some reason, something stops us. So I believe enough is enough, so we're gonna learn from this tonight, and hopefully, you know, like you said, we're gonna have to wait until March, because they have a deadline, and according to the law, they have to follow it. So knowing that they will not be able to be on that next meeting, which is February 5th, so we have to wait for March. So I think that all of us can learn from this, and all of us should learn from this. And hopefully, when we face an appointment, I put emphasis on this because I was on the Board of Justice for the Library, and I believe I show up every meeting, not because I could, but I know I have to, because I put my name, because I know that it wasn't gonna pay me any money, but I stand up because they asked me to do so. See, if I did it, I think everybody who's on any board should be able to do so. If you cannot serve, just move on, because I'm sick and tired of coming to those meetings about to do something that is good for the city, but at the same time, we have to wait for people. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. I just wanted to, is there any, no other? I just wanted to, I mean, to caution us here, we are, we have discussed marijuana to nauseam in this sense, and we're not here to discuss the merits of the ordinance one way or the other. We're just here basically voting for to extend the moratorium so we can cover the city, which expires in a couple days. So we don't meet again until the 11th. In reality, we will have a gap between now and the 11th. So by not voting for this, and if it doesn't pass, we are running the risk of delaying this process even further. So I just wanna make sure, I caution you folks, my colleagues, that voting for this, we're not really doing anything to punish anybody other than ourselves, because then we will go forward without this in the books to protect the city, more directly the city council. So I believe that the planning department and the planning board should've done what they needed to do, and there's nothing according to our counsel here that basically says that they cannot have special meetings, but that's not what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss the fact that we need to extend this to protect the city, and that's what I think we need to be clear about this.
And then the other thing that the city would run the risk of is if the moratorium isn't extended, there is a gap between passage, and if someone runs their application to the city, they may say that, "Well, we're grandfathered in, there was no zoning requirements at the time of our application," and these are extensive, they are parts of the application that do apply to the RMDs. So it's just a risk that you were to leave 11 days subject to future litigation of the city.
Yeah, so let's knock on our noses here, Counsel.
Given what the council president just said in reference to what we are discussing, I believe it is important for us to actually act on this, and I was gonna vote yes on it, but based on what you said and according to the council attorney, I believe I'll take your advice for it. Because, how do I put this? It's not a way of frustration, but what drove me crazy is that Mr. May has been doing a lot of things in regard to what's going on in the city. So I'm not gonna go in depth to it, but I'm sort of like mad, mad in the sense of not taking responsibility to do stuff accordingly, and I mean that, and I will assume that responsibility on my own. But in reference to what you said, I think that I'm gonna vote yes on it. I'm gonna vote yes on it solely based on what you said, because I trust your judgment, and I will take it from there. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think, not having any further comment, I think the question will be on ordination of this, it is ordination. It was being referred to ordinance, so if we're acting on it tonight, it's an order. Through ordinance? We're going back to adoption? Boy, I sound like the Trumps. I sound like the Trumps. Well, the question is on adoption by a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Asak?
Yes.
Beauregard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Court?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order is adopted. The motion has been properly made and properly seconded for reconciliation, hope that it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconciliation? All those oppose? It fails. Mr. Clerk?
An appropriation of the total grant to the amount of $7,109.60 from the Board of Health Massachusetts Association of Health Boards Grant to the City of Brockton Board of Health Mass Association of Health Boards Grant Fund.
That item will be referred to Finance.
An appropriation of $80,000 from a stabilization fund to fire department personal services, non-overtime.
That too will be referred to Finance.
All the items on the agenda are available in their entirety for review in the city clerk's office for those interested parties.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Counsel Ioneary.
Mr. President, if I might, just for a moment, a personal privilege, if I may.
You may, sir.
Thank you, sir, and I just want to, a couple of quick comments. I know a few weeks ago when I was thanking some people, I forgot to thank Aaron, who puts in a lot of time here, you know, he's behind the scenes here, put in a lot of time, put in a lot of time with me when we were moving around. He put in some hot nights at the Wall Memorial Building, just as we did as well. And of course, our audiovisual person that sits right over in the, I always forget her poor name, I'm sorry, but she does an outstanding job, and she followed right along. But I just wanted to make sure that he got the right kudo as well. I just wanna make mention to the counselors that if you have a chance to go upstairs, you will see with a little bit of a dress-up in the committee room where the clerk started the process with the building superintendent, and the committee room got painted, cleaned up, and table got done, and things got done with the help of not only just the building superintendent and his staff, but with the clerk's staff and others there, and they did a nice job, you know, making the room cleaner, as everybody was saying they wanted something different, and I think we did that with different furnishings are in there, and there's different furnishings even in the council chambers. When we return, and we're hoping we're gonna be doing that soon, I would hope so. I would hope so, too. But and at the same token, I just wanna, I just wanna make mention, and I hope that you all do, just, that's keeping our mind and our prayers also for our building superintendent, James Casseri, and his lovely wife Ellie, their situation in passing of their son this past weekend, which was somewhat tragic. So remember them in our prayers, and their calling hours are gonna be on Wednesday at the Russell funeral. So if we could just take a moment of silence, just for them. Thank you. Rest my peace.
Counsel Asak Kayu?
No, I was going to express our sympathies to the Casseri family, so.
He beat you away.
He did, he did, even though they're my constituents, and our thoughts and prayers are with them, they're with them. Thank you.
Counsel Lally?
Personal privilege.
You may, sir.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say once again that there's a, I'm hosting a ward meeting, January 31st, 6:30 p.m. at the Ashfield Middle School. It will be, we'll be having a developer there to discuss his proposal for a old factory on Spark Street. He wants to grow recreational marijuana in the facility, so he's gonna present his proposal to the residents, you know, and he says that, you know, he's interested in hearing what they have to say. If they're not, if the neighborhood isn't interested, he's not going to, you know, try and push it past him. Also, February 15th at 3:00 p.m. is Lithuanian Flag Day at Brockton City Hall, so if you can make it, come on out. Thank you.
Do you have a hutch of Girl Scout cookies at the ward meeting, or what's the story?
Counsel, the Girl Scout cookies will be long gone by the ward meeting.
Counsel Farwell, followed by Beauregard, and then Sullivan.
Just a moment of personal privilege.
You may, sir.
By the way, these remarks are not meant to be a lecture, it's kind of like a call to action for us. This agenda has a number of issues on here involving finances. When I start reading that the CFO feels that unless we have a debt exclusion, which is a Prop. 2.5 override, we're heading down a road which could have some profoundly negative implications for city services, I get worried. When I read that some of these are conditional upon a 5% increase on wastewater sewer fees, I get worried. And so I think, in my opinion, and I would be glad to hear from others, I think we need to get a handle on where we're going financially in this city. I think we need to know what it's gonna cost for borrowing. I think we need to know what we need for engineering costs. I think we need to know what we're going to do with some of the outstanding judgments that are already leveled against the city, such as the Lopes case. I don't know how we would pay that. If you look at the balance in the stabilization reserve fund that was read tonight, $4,561,000, I don't know if that would cover it. And let's remember that if it is being appealed, if we are having ongoing litigation and it's outside counsel, that meter is running. I'm sure these outside counselors are not working for pennies on the dollar, so I'm just getting a little worried. Counsel Ian Eary and I have been through some very difficult times. I've been through them personally when I was on the police department, and I saw people laid off, fire, police, teachers. So I think as a body, particularly with the budget coming up shortly, we really need to get a handle on this. So I don't know, I'll consult with the council president, maybe it's a resolve to have the chief financial officer or his designee come in, I don't know when he's coming back, but we're getting to crunch time, folks. I mean, we're locking ourselves into a position where we have less and less flexibility financially, and what I don't wanna see is reach a point where we're doing all the right things, but the implications for us are that we're laying off teachers, or library people, or fire, or police, because we have no option. And, you know, I don't usually comment on national issues, but I'm not exactly excited about the economy, and whether it's steadily going to get better, or whether it's gonna take a hit. Every time we give out pay raises, it has an implication for the next fiscal year, it has an implication for our pension system, I'm sure the pension liability or the pension payment will go up this year, the unfunded liability payment is going to increase, I'm sure the southeastern regional school district appropriation will go up. So I'm sorry to be long-winded, but I just see a lot of red flags coming up, that I think, I think the 11 of us are going to earn our keep in the next few months, getting a handle on things, finding out exactly where we're going. Certainly, Council President Rodriguez can interact with the mayor and get as much information as he can, but I just, I just hope we can really drill down on this, because I am truly concerned when I see mention of debt exclusions and 5% raises in fees for our residents, fees for our residents, because some people live paycheck to paycheck, they can barely make it. So thank you for, for your indulgence tonight, and I look forward to having all of us take a look at this in the future and try to make the best decisions.
Thank you, Counsel. I, I feel your pain, Counsel Beauregard.
Thank you. I just want to make the announcement again that people, you know, this is, they, tonight we're speaking, it's January twenty-eighth, and I know a lot of people are, you know, doing their tax bills, but there's still time to do the abatements and any kind of, how would I say it, exemptions. And I do want to point out that it's been told to us that the assessors' office, where you would go and speak to individuals on this issue, will be open at noon on Thursday due to the death, untimely death of one of their members' sons, and department's members' sons. And also, my ward meeting will be on Tuesday, tomorrow, January twenty-ninth, at the Downey School, beginning at six-thirty, and the primary topic will be Old Colony Planning Council's presentation on three streets, Thatcher and Pine, Pine and Summer, and the Thatcher Street Mass. Soi Community College entrance. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel Sullivan, followed by Castro.
President, I just want to let everybody that's on the, the ordinance committee know that we will be having an ordinance meeting. Date hasn't been set as of yet, it's going to be a Thursday, I'm just working with our attorney. It will be after the eleventh. There are some matters, I know Counsel Foulwell had filed some matters last year, we kind of focused strictly on the marijuana, and there's some other pending ones. So if you could just know, it's going to be on a Thursday. I'm not sure when school vacation is, I need to figure that out as well, if anybody knows. And I'm sure you know. Do you know?
Wait until the nineteenth, I think.
Okay, so it won't be that, I'll guarantee you that. But I will send an email, and then, and I'll work with the clerk's office and you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Castro.
Thank you, good evening. I just want to remind everyone that this Wednesday night, January thirtieth, six-thirty until eight, at the Davis School, there will be a Ward Four meeting. Now, Saturday evening, we all know, we've seen the newspaper, there was an armed robbery in Brockton and a chase that ended up in Ward Four, and as a result of the chase and the people dispersing into the woods of Ward Four, I had a lot of upset constituents, a lot of fear and anxiety. And I just want people to know that there will be people on hand from the police department to discuss what happened and, and their concerns at my Ward Four meeting, so do join us.